The chairman, Brandy Nelson, asked me to sub tonight since she and the vice chair are both out. And so I will say this is a, an in-person meeting with a virtual attendance as an option. We are recording the meeting and if anyone else wants to record, they can do so notifying me. And nobody does. Okay, so we will start with our first order of business, which is the minutes from July tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Oh, I move to accept the minutes as amended.
Okay, we have a motion.
All second.
And seconded. Okay, we have a motion, second.
No, you can vote. You can vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Standing, anyone? Okay, the next order of business is open space and recreation plan. And this is the first meeting of continuous meetings, which will take place every fourth Thursday until we get through with the plan. And so we're going to kick off tonight with a discussion with Seth Jenkins, who's a senior planner with BRPC, who's going to present us with a, what an open space and recreation plan is. So.
Great. Okay, thank you. So feel free to just stop me and jump in at any point if you have a question.
I got your name right, didn't I, Seth?
Yeah, Seth Jenkins.
Thank you.
Yep, and if you want, I've got some cards up here. Feel free to draft cards. So we're talking about the open space and recreation plan. The town does have an open space recreation plan. It's out of date. The state requires an up-to-date plan in order to be eligible for providing part first funding. And we'll talk about that. I've got a presentation that we're gonna look at a couple of facts. So we've got a lot to kind of take in. I'm gonna quickly run through the first presentation, which was given by Melissa Ryan, who is the reviewer of the plans from the state. And she gave this presentation at the March Citizens Planner Training Collaborative. And it's in regards to an update that was made to the State Guidance Document, the workbook for open space plan. So if you've ever been familiar with an open space plan in the past, worked on one in the past, they're a little different. I'm not sure which version you have. Is that the April version or the two thousand eight version?
It does not have a date on it, but I just got it.
Well, then I would guess it's the most recent one, because if it's the one that I sent Chris, it's the update that was just released in April. So and it's.
It has a March twenty twenty-five revision in it.
Yes. So it's March twenty twenty-five, I think. So. So we're gonna kind of quickly go through this. I'm gonna share my screen before I switch over. Right in, let's see, stuff, there we go. This one's gonna be quick. Then I have an interactive presentation, and then we're gonna talk about the survey, and hopefully you receive the draft survey. So, like I said, this is gonna be quick. It's twenty-one slides. I'm gonna gloss over a few, just because I want to make some key points. So there's a little information about open space and recreation plans in terms of the kind of general for the population. It's a blueprint for action on open space recreation, including both passive and active recreation.
By the way, this is gonna be an open discussion, so if anybody wants to move up to the front or even to the table, please feel free to do so.
I appreciate that so much. Thank you. You show you don't want to move up?
I'm fine.
All right, as long as you can see, I'm in, body, anywhere.
So some things that are included in open space, and this is, may seem redundant, because there's gonna be a number of slides that kind of talk about this. So conservation land, forested land, recreation land, agricultural land. So state, federal, municipal, private, insofar as, you know, examining chapter sixty-one, conservation restrictions, agricultural protection restrictions. Also owned by nonprofits and other state agencies. So we like to bring in nonprofits like BNRC, like trustees of the reservation, like local land trusts into the process. So we'll be involving them. Also brownfields and undeveloped sites. So.
Does open space have to be publicly accessible?
Doesn't have to be publicly accessible in terms of the review in the open space plan. It's, it's looking at, so like chapter sixty-one properties.
I was thinking actually about country club.
Um, so a country club would be examined, but only in kind of a cursory way. And that is, you know, there's acknowledgement of a private golf country club and maybe some of the amenities, but not.
Okay.
Not generally a lot of information about, but what we do like to include camps, we do like to include country clubs or racket clubs or fishing game.
Private clubs, huh?
Clubs like that. So you probably won't get a state grant for driving range.
I was thinking more.
Helpful to think of all properties that may.
That we own personally.
Present opportunities for the towns.
I mean.
Recreational connections or to meet any of the towns recreational needs.
What the country club.
Or farming needs. I mean, they're all part of the assets we share.
Well, part of what the country club owns is that the old child.
Sure. So, so don't get, maybe don't get restricted in just thinking about public land.
Yeah.
Well, and also ownership changes, right? Like the, the golf course that's in, I don't know if it's Great Barrington.
Well, no, that's, that's in Great Barrington.
That's in Great Barrington, right.
You know, it's called Aggermont.
Right, so we don't know, or like, or like between last time and this time, Simon's Rock has changed from, so these, so I think that actually private ones are.
So the state does make a distinction between passive and active recreation. Active recreation is, is think about courts, fields, somewhere where you're doing an organized activity, more passive recreation or more trails or connections from nearby communities.
Excuse me, thanks.
Yep.
You were gonna make a comment about chapter sixty-one A land.
So chapter sixty-one, insofar as the town and other municipalities should be concerned with exercising their right to first refusal on those properties if there are identified lands through this process. The town says, you know, we recognize that that's important agricultural land, and we want to help make sure that it stays in agriculture. Or, so it's, it's a way for the town to kind of look at what properties are enrolled in those state programs and kind of decide, okay, where are the priority parcels? Because that's part of that agreement that the landowner makes with the state and the municipality that by receiving that tax abatement, they also say that they're gonna, you know, provide the town with first round refusal if they put the parcel in.
Sixty-one B is a lot different than sixty-one A.
Yeah, all the chapter sixty-one programs, so A, B, and I think there's C, yeah, so the agricultural, there's, there's forestry, active agriculture and.
Recreation.
Recreational, yeah, agriculture is. So in presenting to the public, you know, and again, these are kind of, I'll share these slides with Chris and he can share everything back. But, but this is, you know, provided by the state, this, and these are sample slides. But, you know, it gives the public a way to provide feedback, educates the public as well. So it's a two-way communication. You're communicating to the public about your open space elements in the town. And then it tries to integrate, you know, all of these resources in one place. And it's, it's a formulate plan so that you can look, once you've done one, you can look at another communities and see the overlap, right? Because it's organized in a very structured way, the requirements, the chapter layout is all the same. Every community in Massachusetts is gonna have a very similar layout to a document.
So the chapter layout is exactly how it's got to mirror what the state is doing.
And that's why, that's why they give you the workbook. And you'll notice at the end of the workbook, there's a checklist of things that you gotta make sure that you're addressing in the plan or, you know. We almost universally hear back from the state of, hey, can you add a little bit more to this section or can you change this section? But, you know, we're, we're finding that as we do more and more, we get a little more refined and we hear less and less from the state. But, and we'll talk about that as we get further.
But we're, we're primarily a tourist community. And so educating residents is important, but we need to educate our visitors as well. And I don't know if that's part of the open space resident plan.
It is so far as there's, there's a communication aspect to it. And if you put it on your website and folks are coming to Great Barrington and they say, you know, I want to know some more about open space. They can find it on your website.
I'm gonna go for a walk.
All of it. And there will be other resources that are pointed to in the plan, and we're gonna talk about some of those here shortly. So the twenty twenty-five update, which is what you've got, is changed from two thousand eight. I'm just gonna gloss over this, but believe. But this shows the difference between the two thousand eight requirements and the twenty twenty-five requirements.
This, this is what state says we have to do.
And, and there's, as you can tell from the left and the right, there's a reduction, right? So they reduced some redundant elements, and then they've also taken out the ADA plan, which there was a required analysis of all the ADA properties within the town. But that's really considered a separate plan. And so the state recognized that they created kind of an unfunded mandate by tying the two plans together, because we found on several occasions where we've updated the OSRP, but the town has not had an updated ADA plan, which has prevented the OSRP from getting full approval. And so the two kind of have, up to this point, have had to go hand in hand. And so you've had to have them both be current in order to receive the full approval for the ADA. So they, they've removed that requirement, which is, is, I think will make the OSRP a little easier lift, I guess is how I'd describe that. And then I think that, I mean, the town just did an ADA update. We, the agency was kind of trying to get ahead of the game by helping towns to update their ADA plans back when we were assuming that that was part of an OSRP, when that guidance changed that moves. But there's still funding to do ADA plans and we're still actively working with municipalities, so they can do that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So the, um, and maybe this is a question for you all and for you, Chris. The taking the redundancy makes sense, right? But taking the ADA lens out of an open space process might reduce an inclusivity lens. And so I'm wondering, like, I mean, is that then just up to you all and the disability to?
There's, there's a way that the state sort of balances on the other, other end in terms of there's the environmental justice communities, and it talks about the Office of Environmental Justice. You know, there's guidance, and the state has mapped all of the environmental justice communities. And there's the expectation that there's an enhanced outreach effort made to any marginalized population within the community. So that could include the disability community or it could include non-English speakers or it could include, you know, low-income residents. So there's, there's extra effort made as part of the plan to reach out to those folks.
Yeah, that's great.
Even though it's not on the state's checklist, we can still think about our open spaces through that, through that lens.
Absolutely.
Um, excuse me, one second. Kim, give everybody's name.
Jovanina.
Thanks. We've got everybody introduced now, so we can talk.
So I'm, I'm gonna again, kind of gloss over some of this stuff, because we'll talk about it a little bit more and you'll be able to look at this presentation more, more depth, and I want to get through it, because we got a lot to get through. There is, this is a change, though, in terms of, the, the plan has always required an endorsement from the chief executive officer and the planning agency. And typically, typically, this plan is developed by a committee of folks that's not a planning board. However, we're kind of in an expedited process. This is a state grant. They were very late in releasing the awards. And so we've got to finish this process by the end of next June. And so that's, that's one of the reasons why we're having the planning board, you know, focus on this as part of your regular business. But certainly we will bring in other stakeholders and, and like I said, invite guest speakers to talk to us about the process. The change, they've added that you need endorsement letters from the Conservation Commission and the Recreation Commission. Those are never required. It's not a huge lift, but, you know, usually at the end of the process, there's presenting the plan to the different groups and, you know, seeking their blessing. So it adds up another step.
So that's like a sign-off from those groups?
It's, yeah, it's basically you get it on their agenda and they, you know, provide some feedback and others. Part of the plan is a public comment period, pretty standard on planning documents, that there be a, a public comment period where it's featured on the town's website. There are usually paper copies available at the library, at town hall, maybe senior center. Uh, so that public comment period, you know, anyone in, in town can, can comment. And then certainly it's, it's encouraged that that's a time when the other boards and committees can be reviewing the plan and offering substantive guidance as well. So hopefully it's not a new thing that they're seeing, you know, when you're bringing it for their blessing in June, the middle of June, right? I mean, because that's, we've, we've got a very, we got a fixed timeline, we gotta kind of work backward from that point, because that's.
For each of these, you know, we hope to have representatives from those committees come, come to these meetings. And, you know, you all and or I can go to them every month and be in touch. I mean, those are just the required agencies, but obviously with broad coverage.
So this isn't really relevant. They are offering a new option where you can do a regional plan for Great Barrington. That's not relevant, but for Alfred or Aggermont or Washington, it might be.
Do we want to work with them? Do they want to work with that work?
I don't, it's where, it's, it's, Great Barrington is going to be complex enough. And that could be a whole nother application to the state to try and do a regional project. So I think it'd be better to just focus on getting Great Barringtons done. And then if they wanted to partner together, that would be a good opportunity for them. In fact, I don't think it would be eligible because the.
We're more than five thousand.
Yeah, you have a population or a regional plan. They did make a change, though, and this is good. They, they changed the lifetime of the plan. Or probably the last time Great Barrington created one of these was a five-year plan, then they made it a seven-year plan. And now with this latest workbook, they, they extended it to ten years, which is, is much better. Because it's, it's kind of a, it's a big lift. It's a, it's a major project. Um, so we'll, we'll talk about some of this stuff as we go through my other presentation, but we're, we're working on some of these steps right now. Open participation process, there's, can take a lot of different forms. You'll see kind of the way that we've done them in the past, and we've had good, good success with those. So generally, there's a survey. We use Survey Monkey, but we also, again, try and make sure that it's, it's translated and that it's, if there's a, you know, a non-English speaking community, we try and make sure that there are printed copies available to Council on Aging, and then we publicize it at the Council on Aging and, you know, talk to folks about filling in those paper copies and have some at the library and, but the number one response methodology is certain, and getting people to use, you know, a link on Survey Monkey, a QR code on Survey Monkey, and to, to go directly to the survey and fill it out. And then that collects all that information and creates the graph and creates all the data from what we're, what we're getting from folks. Also part of the process, we'll have a couple of public meetings. Generally, we have a public meeting to announce the survey and kind of educate people about the open space plan and kind of get some buzz in the community about it. Then we try and have another open space meeting when we've got the survey results and we're presenting what we heard from the community. And then oftentimes we'll have a, a kind of an announcement of the goals and actions for the next plan. And, and that's also when we're releasing that public draft. So there's a couple punctuated public meetings throughout the process.
Can I ask you a question? Do you see farmers as your constituents in this process?
Everyone in the community is.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I'm not just, I think that should be, but I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Sorry, quick question. The, um, the comment period, do comments get, do any changes happen as a result of comments? So there's a review of comments?
So, I mean, I could tell you, we, I've just finished doing the master plan in Lansborough, and we had a PDF on their website that people were able to, then the comments in the PDF, if they were that tech savvy. But we also had, again, printed copies that we left in the library and in town hall and the COA, where there were markers and it said on there, feel free to write directly on this plan. And then we collected those plans and we looked at them with the committee and went through all that. I emailed all the PDF comments to the committee. And it's the purview of the board as to what, you know, is included or what is, you know, viewed as maybe this isn't something that we need to include, but.
It's iterative.
It is, yes.
Hopefully.
It should be. I mean, if we're doing it the right way. So these are just some ideas about public participation, and I know they're pretty small there, but, you know, some, some potential photo contests, going out to little schools. And these are things that we've done, you know, I mean, as, as BRPC, we've, I've presented at Monument a number of times. Um, and talked to the kids at Career Day, but, but we can also do that specifically focused on the open space plan. Do we invest in the public library? We've had great success. You know, we did those in Monterey. We did both master plan and open space, and we used their library to great effect. Such a beautiful library, but it's, it's, it's good to get people involved in their community. Also going though to where people are, going to the COA luncheon or bingo or going to food pantry or, you know, trying to get out to as many, the farmer's market, as many different locations as, as possible. Is the appropriate level to take. Uh, this is that expectation that the state has, that there's enhanced outreach to EJ populations. If you're not sure where the EJ populations in Great Barrington, go to the state's EJ map. And it's, it's the downtown and southern part. And as, I'm recalling from memory, but I believe that, that, that those census tracts qualify based on income levels. And they're just right at that threshold. They're actually a little bit above, but I think the state qualifies them because they're just right at that median income threshold.
I have a question, Mr. Is, who's a part of the environmental justice community?
I am not sure.
I think it qualifies based on income threshold.
Okay.
There's another area in Great Barrington that, that might qualify in terms of percentage of non-English speakers.
Oh, really? Okay.
I think so.
Don't, don't make it public, because ICE is watching.
Well, that's not a, but yeah, that, that is a concern.
All right, so getting close to the end of this one. So an important aspect of the, the open space plan is an inventory of municipal properties, public properties, and then permanently protected private parcels. And so those, those are data tables that go in and, and they're, it's important that those are, you know, updated records, right? Obviously, those are things that are changing as each of these plans gets updated. And you want to make sure you're including the, the latest information about what APR, CRs, chapter sixty-one, but also municipal properties, right? So.
But sixty-one's not permanently protected.
No, but it is included in these inventories. Um, so again, we talked about the action plan. You know, there's goals and objectives and actions table at the end. That's kind of where the rubber meets the road and that's sort of the starting place. We usually take with the committee in terms of looking at the last plan and that former set of goals and actions and saying, okay, what's, what's been accomplished, what's maybe not relevant anymore? And what do we need to add back into this list because it's still a, to be done?
And what's, and what's new?
And what's new. And so this, this is the contact information for Melissa Ryan. Again, she's the reviewer at the state level. Um, let's see, I think. Yeah, that was in here. I'm gonna stop my share and go to a different share.
So that's, you know, keep that in mind as the snapshot. That's, that's the product that we want to get to in June. How we get there, how we do the public participation, how we do the outreach, how we talk to landlords, how we talk to the EJ population. That's something that we need to discuss and make sure that we do our best job.
How long has the state been doing an OSRP?
Uh, you know, I've looked at some that are from the eighties and nineties, so it's a longstanding, it was a planning document that the state has.
And that's how they're seeing it as a planning document?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Locally and statewide?
States have one state, for decades.
Yeah.
Number three.
And that's, that's a, like a federal, and actually, as part of the National Park Service, the state had an updated open space and recreation analysis. So I changed my screen share. I've got a couple of different things. I'm just gonna show you quickly here. So this is just, let me refresh this, actually. I think the map should come back down. So this is a plug for BRPC's websites that we've got. It's also shared outside. And it's, it's a great way for tourists and residents and everyone to know about what open space elements are available in the town, but also countywide. So using the website, you can look at a particular activity. So you could search for all, all the basketball courts in the county. And it'll bring you to both a map that shows you every basketball court in the county and the description. But you can also look, don't want to make anybody dizzy, but you can look at all the Berkshire County communities.
That makes you feel bad.
Why's that?
Not enough.
That there aren't enough Berkshire County communities or that there aren't enough basketball courts.
Basketball courts.
You know, there's, actually, there's a surprising number of them, but, but certainly we could use more. So the, you know, these are all the properties in Great Barrington. And it's both state and municipal and private. And so, you know, it's got the country club.
This isn't just basketball.
This is, this is everything, right?
Okay.
And it also, you know, there are resources, professional guides, but also clubs and leagues. Like if people are looking for little league, they get their kid involved in. It's got all the little leagues, um, let's see, baseball. So it's got all of the different local little leagues and contact information. And also hopefully those leagues are using that as a way to set up, you know, inner, inner squad games and have Adam Scheser play the Dalton team.
How about soccer?
Uh, there's, there's soccer.
We just, we stopped at our.
You should all.
This is good.
It didn't, this resource didn't exist before last year. And, you know, so Berkshire Natural Resources guys will have their own just for their properties. You know, each community will have their own, but now it's, now it's kind of, and it's, and you can translate too, so you can read in Spanish.
What, what about, you know, we have, we have ticks here. And so hiking is very dangerous for a lot of parts of the year, and people love to walk on the roads. And, uh, you know, I have to live on a, on a loop that people drive for miles to come walk this loop. But it's not public information anywhere. It's, it's a public road, but it's not.
You know, I think some of that information is available through like some different bike, uh, Berkshire Bike Path Council, I believe has some information about which county roads are maybe quieter or more more conducive to, to bike riding or pedestrian uses. Um, I don't, that's not something necessarily that the OSRP focuses on, but in, insofar as, you know, the town can also dedicate sink roads, right? And that's something that, that will be discussed, so that, that could be. And that, you know, the planning board can exercise some control as to what happens, the rights of ways of designated sink roads in terms of stone walls, tree cutting, so.
But as we talk, you should, you should point out, you know, things like that may be opportunities and that might become part of the action plan. And the action might be put signs on the road or get, get the road onto this Berkshire outside map resource. Publicize it as a route or whatever. Yeah, so that's a good example of thinking about those opportunities.
And I think, I like, the complete streets gets considered in, in, you know, in, in reviewing the plan. And I think I'd like the complete streets gets considered in in, you know, in in reviewing the plan, it's not. It's not something that we refer to a lot, but it's certainly something that gets gets examined and. Certainly in other communities, we've looked at things like Strava heat maps or looking at, you know, where where are people using. Trails for roads or.
In general, does the state not look at side, uh do they look at sidewalks as like part of roads and separate from um like open space and rent?
I would say in in an urban setting, yes, I think that sidewalks is is more of a road element than. Examination in in the larger municipal open space.
For community preservation purposes.
Yeah, I know that, I know that. So uh I'm gonna go ahead and present this and actually, so this is the the methodology we use for most of our public meetings. It's a program called Mentimeter and it functions as a interactive PowerPoint, so if you, while you're sitting there. You have a smartphone, you can join at menti.com, so if. Want to give it a try, you can do it on your computer, you can do it on your smartphone. When you go to menti.com and put in the eight-digit code at the top there, eighteen sixty, seventy-six, twelve. This is, so just for clarification, this is a a live-only thing. Uh this is, this is used for the presentation.
It's menti.
N E N T I.
I assume you can do it on a computer.
You have it on here, you can do it.
I've got it here, if you don't, if if you wanna interact with it.
I know, I was just gonna try and I was gonna um test.
Yeah, I mean, if if everyone is willing, please write out, this is.
If you want to jump on, anybody wants to use it.
I've got slides that are interactive or even so, hopeful that people are. Yeah, so there's there's a live feedback and ask a question throughout the presentation, what it'll do, it'll. We queue all those questions up and then you can run through them early on. It's nice because oftentimes in public meetings, people might not feel that they wanna get out and put themselves on the spot. And and make a public statement, but they might be willing to pose a question if they can do it just on their on their smartphone.
So the menti is a way for us to comment while you're going through the presentation, is that?
Yeah, so it's a way, it's a way we structure these public meetings so that we can get. Feedback from the community and present the information, it's that iterative process that we were talking about before in terms of. You know, when we when we get the survey results, we can present them using the Mentimeter and then we can get further feedback on those results. In a live way while presenting.
And you as a participant in the meeting can see it occurring, you you know, you you.
So as you go to the next screen, that's gonna change here too? Oh, okay, I thought we were just.
Nope, no, so let's let's go ahead and jump into it, so again, there may be some redundancy, right, because this. This is focused on Great Barrington and this this gives you an idea of kind of some of the slides we could use for a public forum. So.
So if you're on, if you're following this, Seth, just change the screen and it changed on your, so you can.
So so the image on the left is the state's record of open space and recreation plans and. Let's see.
We're not on that page.
I guess, okay, I had my intern work on this this afternoon and I asked him if he could change that image and I guess he didn't. Well, I'll be honest, that's what. Honest to truth, what happened, I thought he was gonna change it, but in any case, um you know, Great Barrington is currently out of date. Uh their their plan is not.
We are out of date, that's okay.
Yes, so so I mean, the. The only consequence to that is you're not eligible for these state grants, you have to have this plan in place. At least provisionally approved before you can apply for a a couple of different uh state grant programs. So here's the previous draft that you guys started working on in in twenty eighteen. Um and just, you know, these are the kind of slides we use to explain to the public. Kind of what we've been talking about before about what open space is, so you know, it's a description. I included a couple of slides because I just wanted you to see different ways that we present the same information, but I'm not gonna. We don't have to look at each one because it's kind of the same. Presented three different ways, right, but we try and include pictures, obviously Monument Mountain here, you know, local pictures.
Excuse me, is your open space the R two and the R four?
Uh it's town hall, it's it's not, it's it's not, it's not, there's no, there's no zoning, I mean, there's an examination of zoning, but it's it it's not.
Regardless of, and some of the parks are downtown.
Uh so, as I mentioned, conditional acceptance gets you eligibility for the state grant program. So one of them's called the Local Acquisition for Natural Diversity. Uh one's called Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations, that's a pretty common one, Pittsfield and and I think Great Barrington is used in the past to do some. Support improvement, certainly, uh Pittsfield has used that a number of times. Land and Conservation Funds and that can include water protection uh districts. Uh and then uh there's some other grants, miscellaneous grants administered by the Executive Office of Energy and Fair Affairs. Okay, so just some examples of open spaces in Great Barrington and obviously this isn't an exhaustive list, but this is. Some places that. Count as open space. So in in discussing the process and, you know, this is how we communicate it to the to the public again. In this case, the planning board that's gonna oversee the plans development, um. The planning board and and BRBC is gonna work to conduct stakeholder interviews as Chris mentioned, you know, getting out to other. Boards and committees, letting them know about the survey, uh letting them know about the public events and also trying to query folks about what they'd like to see. We'll have monthly meetings, you know, you're gonna develop one of your planning board meetings to developing the open space, the other one you're focused on regular business, I think. If there's an emergency situation, we probably handle some regular planning board business on a OSRP meeting, but it it will be. It will be a process to get to the end by by May, usually this is a twelve to eighteen month process, so. So we'll develop the survey, discuss the sections and write the plan kind of in in tandem.
The we is who exactly?
We're the committee.
The committee.
But you are part of us?
Well, not in a voting way, but as a consultant.
You are, and so will you be?
Yes, I'll be working.
So you'll be monitoring our process and saying.
I will be, I will be walking you through the whole thing.
You gotta hopefully achieve A, B, and C by X day, you know, we're gonna come up with a schedule for when we do it. We'll think about.
You know, I I think it's, I think it's realistic, I've done seven or eight of these in the last two years, so. Feel like I've got, I handle one of them, I think the new guidance, although this is the first one that I'll be doing. Based on a new guidance document, I think make it a little easier, so I think we're.
The key is for the planning board. The the thing that takes the most time is is public involvement. And so to to do this in such a short amount of time. We're gonna need as much of your time as possible to go and table at the farmers market, go to the council on Asian, go to all of the. People and groups where they are, in addition to this meeting every fourth Thursday. We will all have a lot of work to do in order to produce a plan that is inclusive and. Of of as many voices as we can include and as. You know. Effective as as we want it to be, so it's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of homework between sessions, lots to do between sessions.
And a lot of work to get started, so because you have to give something. For people to comment on.
So we got.
Well, we've got this survey.
We got an online survey, surveys, you know, we've we've got, we'll we'll talk about. Kind of the timeline for some of these public meetings, we've kind of already got that kind of penciled in. Um so, you know, because we've got an end date, we can work backwards, it's it's makes it in some ways a little easier. So so we're having this initial meeting here, say August, but it's really the end of.
She's already ahead of schedule.
We're already ahead of schedule, right? The next couple of months. We're gonna talk to stakeholders, you're gonna help us to develop survey questions. We're gonna launch the survey, ideally, I I it would be better to launch it October, November, have it open. I don't find it's it's worth having open more than a couple of months. And like Chris was mentioning, it's it's important to have regularly interspersed reminders about this survey. Because what you'll find is you'll get a big lot of survey responses right at the beginning and then, you know, maybe you'll have something in the paper. And you'll get another set of responses and then maybe you'll have a community event where the planning board says, hey, let's go. Hand out little QR codes that have the survey and 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 you'll see a blip there, but it's. It's really dependent on those regularly interspersed and after a couple of months. It's unlikely that you're gonna be getting more people that that have already.
How many surveys are there?
There's one survey.
Just this one that you shared with us?
Well, that, I mean, that's the one for for.
That's a draft.
Right, that's a draft.
That's a draft, but that's that's it.
So we collect the survey months, uh survey responses for a couple of months. Kind of concurrent with that, we're working on drafting the plan. Wintertime, we're looking at the results of the survey and and kind of coming up with that new set of goals and objectives. We should have already been thinking about what, like I said, our next meeting, we'll talk about the the last set of goals and objectives and say. Where are we, so you should be thinking about that kind of throughout the whole process, but. When we've got survey results, that's where we really sit down and say, okay, here's what we heard from the community, now let's let's put that into. Some actionable items.
So is that February then, is that the what you previously referred to as the public comment period?
Uh no, that's public comment period would be April. Right, so we're we're now, so we're having, we're having a public forum in October. To kick off the survey. Right, we're 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 having a a meeting at the library where we're announcing the open space survey, letting people know what what it is all about. And and then we've got survey open for two months and we've got. Uh I'll give you a good example, so in in Monterey, we did the the master plan with the planning board and they made business cards. That had a URL and a a QR code and then they said, alright, we're gonna split up a day, a Saturday at the transfer station. And we're gonna spend a couple of hours handing out cards at the transfer station and, you know, Monterey, there's what, just over a thousand people. Registered in the town and we had almost four hundred responses, three hundred and sixty. Now, they were a mix of out of town, you know, seasonal residents, but and that's good, right? We wanted to hear from seasonal residents in Monterey, but but we got a good response rate because the act, the planning board took a very active role in publicizing it. If if the. You get what you put into it in terms of value, so. So we come back, we talk about those goals and objectives, uh we present those to the community. Then we present the draft plan in March or April uh to. To the community for a thirty-day comment period, it's featured on the website, again, that's where people can can write on the the printed ones. Respond in PDF, we take that, we submit it to the state, the state takes. Usually there's a fairly quick turnaround where you get your conditional approval letter, you get a letter that says you've been conditionally approved. Need to make these edits for full acceptance. Here back from the state, we make those changes to the to the uh OSRP in time that we can submit it by June.
What what's the May timing then, is that like early May, late May, I mean, how much time is needed to get?
Uh mid-May, I would say would be safe um to to submit and a year back and then have time to address the comments and then.
So basically then, if beginning in May, we would then be evaluating and reviewing the public comments.
Yeah, mid-April to to mid-May is that public comment period and then or. April, I guess, for public comment and then early May, you talk about, which of those things are, again.
So during that uh half-month period before we submit that thing, we're gonna have to make the revisions, not from any public comments.
And there's a, there's a section in the document where you talk about, here's what we heard during the public comment, here are some of the things and and. Say, here's how we addressed it in plan or here's how we changed some actions.
I have a question about the inventory, it's like in our old our uh OSRP, that was like twenty pages. Documents and maps and plans and we have to go through all of that updating because that's dated, who's doing all of that work?
All that information we we have with our.
That's you?
Yeah, so we'll have all the mapping, our.
Holy natural, oh therefore, okay.
Yeah, we'll we'll produce all the mapping, we've got all the open space records in terms of the. All of those things we were talking about for Chapter sixty-one, municipal lands. We've got tables of.
Oh, this is excellent, I didn't realize that you were doing that too.
Uh so, you know, in terms of the the workbook, this just kind of lays out the kind of the sections in the plan, so you've. Got an executive summary, a statement of purpose, and these are the the chapter headings.
Are you doing the writing too?
Yes. It's good to. What's that?
Some fun in the writing.
Uh I mean, I try and give it some personality, uh.
You, I see the personality, it could come out.
We'll we'll do it together, uh it's oftentimes it's a good idea to identify, if there's a person on the committee. Who has a editorial chance, uh then then it's good to identify that person early on. Um I I guess what I would say is it's it's. It's good to have it be a um a very draft document until, you know, you don't wanna give it too fine a read early on, because it's gonna be. It's gonna go through a lot of revisions, so don't don't micro uh. Manage the 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 wording initially, at the end, we can certainly fine tune all the language to. The committee's burden. So in terms of other. Previous plans in Great Barrington, you know, there's there's a wealth of plans to call on, there's the twenty thirteen master plan, the twenty thirteen. OSRP, Chris is saying the twenty twenty-two for on the better Great Barrington, got the actions from that right here. Like I said, the complete streets, pollinator action plan, guys just did an MVP not terribly long ago. And certainly reviewing, you know, CPA projects, Great Barrington's got a lot of history of CPA projects, so looking at what projects have happened.
Can I just ask, I did put some questions in there just for fun, um just to see if it worked, but um. From the paused OSRP process that I was a part of and Patriot was not here, Chris in twenty twenty. Um we, I don't know, you sent him, you sent him the results.
Yes, survey, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so there were three hundred and seventy-five, like, yeah, so how are you going to, it would be sad to.
Well, what we could do is we can, we can, we can put some of that information in the medics, we can have some text that refers to, hey, in twenty eighteen, when the town was. Developing a a draft OSRP, there was some surgery work that was done, usually. Taking that time, I mean, we would wanna, we'll wanna give it acknowledgement while still. Prioritizing the survey and the work.
Like the current conversation, yeah, totally, I just wonder, I wonder if, I mean, it's a lot to like sort through. But I wonder if there isn't something to be learned from what people were saying then and um. Yeah, I don't know, I just would hate to see all of, because it wasn't just like our work, I mean, whatever work.
It was rich content.
I mean, I I wonder, there were also um. You know, people put their time and effort into answering, and so there's a little bit around like, I think that sometimes what happens with the survey is that there can be this feeling that. You've put the time and effort in and you don't know where that went, right, and so we wouldn't want to then have people be like, I, you know, I did the survey like. Uh, you know, I did the survey, like, where's that information? But that somehow it's honored, and I don't know if that's possible, but it's a question that I'm, I'm thinking about.
I certainly think we can, we can acknowledge it and we can present some of the information that, that happened as a result, I, I would say. To answer your other question about, you know. Making sure people feel acknowledged, we always try and present, you know, the, the survey offers both. Kind of aggregated results that can presented graphically, but also open response results and. And we try and present that information in an unredacted form. Which sometimes, you know, there are some spicy comments that could matter, but, but we put that as part of the appendix and we like to have people be able to go and say. Hey, look, there's the thing that I left in the survey, so, um, I would also say though that, you know. A survey is part of what informs the. Right, I mean, stakeholder interviews, talking with, I mean, the, the groups that have expertise, the highway department. There are a lot of different things that, that combine to inform the plan and I. I often give a caveat that I think it's, 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 it's. Can be easy to read too much into a survey that's answered by ten percent of the town's population. Right, and say that we've got a, a mandate, I mean, I think that it's important to present the information you receive. And, and say. This is how many people and this is what that represents in the town and take it with grain assault. That the, the most active groups are the ones that are often have the loudest voices and, and that's good and, and, but can also give them a. A megaphone.
I'm, also, I'm thinking about the date when that took place and where we are now. Covid is like this strange period parentheses around our lives for at least a couple of years and then, and we're always hearing about. How behavior has changed or we now have people working from afar or the remote working or this or that or the other. We're no longer aggregating in the same way, I'm just thinking. We, if we have data from just before Covid or pre-Covid and we look at it now. And how, I mean, I'm just thinking when you're getting this data from across the state. I bet it's pretty interesting and I don't know what it would reveal, but we're always trying to figure out. How did we change our behavior? How has our thinking been, we changed? I don't know whether you're getting that from your surveys.
Really good question.
You know, I, I, I think that we've looked at some of that, uh, through, through that lens, I mean, certainly we've seen changes in. The demographic distribution in the county and we're talking about before. With the technological change that came with Covid has freaked people up to live. Remotely, which I think has changed. The dynamic of the county in a lot of ways.
But I wonder if, I wonder if, I hear what you're saying, like, going back to it, like, this is five years ago, right? And, and, and this is a fresh, this is a conversation of now, right? And, and kind of going back and figuring out how to use what people said five years ago might not actually just be kind of effective for this current plan. Or, you know, whatever the right word is, but I do wonder if the survey question, like, has your relationship to open space changed? Because of Covid, because the answer for me would be yes, actually. And it might be something that you all want to know and if, you know, and if it has, has it reduced, has it expanded? You know, I don't, you don't know that it has to be in there, but it's a really, but it is a really interesting question to kind of get at the, um. You know, where are you here then? And is your relationship to this land, has it changed as a result of this massive event that we all experienced? It's an interesting question and it might be valuable, I mean, who knows what.
It might reveal.
Who knows what it would reveal?
I think you'll see, I mean, I think when we look at the questions, I think you'll see that there's similarity between the questions that were asked. As part of your survey, as part of the twenty thirteen questions that were asked and, and, I mean, I think that there are. There are thematic elements that, that remain.
Track, maybe have.
Yeah, yeah, remain. Relevant in, in the town over time and you, and you can kind of do a, a longitudinal study. And, and looking at the, the responses from folks.
But there are other events too that may have changed.
Yeah, totally.
What's your, what's your experience with open space now that ISIS is running? Or whatever, whatever it is.
Yeah, totally.
Pantries.
But I also, but, I mean, I don't want to get into the weeds of questions today, obviously, but like even unless, you know, you don't have to say, I used to, to talk about safety. Right, like, there can be questions of around safety, you know, how safe do you feel? In various opens, but do you and your family feel? You know, that can, that can speak to lots of different things, but it might kind of get at something that. Like I used, that you wouldn't necessarily want to put in the documents, so. How to get follow-up questions if you find something that's active on the survey? And you want, boy, we really.
So that's for that public forum. And using this manometer and we're almost to the interactive part. Just stay patient, we're gonna get there, here, I've just got some, uh, some bullets of.
We're gonna keep you here until about nine thirty.
Well, I mean, if you guys. So just some bulleted projects that will come in twenty twenty-three CPA. Okay, so everybody should be in to manometer, this was just, just to get you in. So let's play, uh, oh, I didn't clear it, that's okay, I, I did it, tested it before, um, quickly.
I lost, guess the number? What, what number we got?
Uh, so, so it's going to the next slide. Did you submit?
Is everyone still at the math? Previous point.
Uh, oh, so if, just, just, um. Refresh your screen, it should bring you to this one, if you refresh the.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm waiting for the presenter to do.
Yeah, so once you've submitted it, it'll say waiting for the presenter. So, um, again, this is not high stakes situation, this is just showing the hell it works, right, so. So there's my correct answer, fourteen.
What was my answer?
Uh, so, um, and this just gives you some examples of the kinds of slides that we can have. So this one is a pin image, it's not always easy cause it's hard to zoom. People always struggle with.
Oh, you have to zoom outside the map.
Tap the map and then it's the bit, but you can't. You can't zoom in on exactly the spot where you want to be, get yourself close and then.
Oh, that's, oh my gosh, it's so tiny.
Is it working for everybody? It's right at the top.
Yeah.
Zero seven six one two.
Couple I'm on that mountain, couple on Lake Mansfield.
I tried to be on Simon's Rock, so I could have landed in Lake Mansfield.
Well, this is pretty, uh, pretty interesting.
Only if it's accurate.
Do you hit submit or?
Yes, yeah, yeah, once you've got your, and dropped it's submit. You see it on the right-hand corner, we've got, um.
There's a.
Everybody's favorite popular great barrington is in Sheffield.
Yeah, I think that's mine.
Well done.
Uh, so it's just, it's you submitted, so now it's just, as soon as, as soon as I go to the next one, it'll, yeah. Well, no, it's just waiting for me to go to the next slide, and that's the indication that you've, you've successfully submitted your response.
Do you think it showed up there?
Uh, well, I didn't submit a response, I'm just trying to get the.
Oh, it did?
I, I hit submit, but I didn't, you know, put a response, I just.
Oh, yeah, but if you hit submit, then did your dot appear where you think you dropped it? I mean, it could be overlapping with the three.
You're sort of talking a different language right now, that's.
Well, did you drop it?
Did you point?
Yeah, she said she didn't.
I'm, I'm gonna have to say no, I think. Did you point? Did you touch her?
You know, and, and that, this is a good example, this, this, there are.
So there's some cakes.
Yeah, there's some cakes, I mean, it works pretty well, but there's also eventually. Confusion, right, and, and.
It's funny, it's knife breaker.
It is, it is, and, and we try and throw fun, you know. The, ask your, or pick a number, or I like to, my other slide is. Are you a cat dog, a cat person or a dog person or both, or, you know, it, it gets people talking.
She's a cat person, I'm sorry, so you want to. You don't have an animal person.
Okay. So this one is a prioritization. So you've got a list of, or I'm sorry, your three favorite, I'm sorry, it's. There are other ones where you can prioritize all of them, this one is just.
Drag the favorites into it.
And this is it?
Well, this, this is, these twelves, you're limited by how many choices you can present. And we got, if we have twelve more spots, we could say, be slide two for more choices, right?
And what if you don't respond to it, you still get to go to the next one?
Then you give, you know, you have.
But does that make sense?
Do I submit now?
Uh, once you're, once you've selected your three, submit and you'll see that, oh, there they go.
Wait, hold on.
Alright, so now we've had three, three submissions.
Mine, I just, I just click.
Oh, yay. Where's the park in Housatonic, with, oh, uh, Bruski Memorial, is that? I'm getting hot.
Someone turned off the air conditioner.
I know, I didn't, he did. Oh, look at that.
So, and, and I guess the other thing we'll, I would say is, at these public meetings. We'll see how many people we have logged in, you know, right here, we've got twelve, we have seven responses. If we wait for all twelve to respond, we could be at the meeting all night, so usually there's a point where we say, alright, we've.
Three, two, one.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna cut it off. You can still respond, if you're stuck on a slide and you're still working on it, if I move on, they can continue to submit. So it's, it's not that they're prevented from submitting a response, but.
So this tells you how, how many.
Well, Lake Mansfield and Housatonic River walk, say, second and third, but they look like they're the same number. Is that possible?
That's possible, they could be.
Yeah.
What are the colors? And it'll, it'll report the data.
The color signifying it or is that the type of?
It's just automatically, I mean, the, the, the program generates the colors. I don't think there's any flexibility in, in changing them.
There's no significance there?
Who picked Husidome, can I ask? No.
I did, but I meant to pick, um, the park. I couldn't get, I couldn't actually remove it from my list.
Okay, so here's a, here's a different one, this is an open response, so, uh, if we didn't mention your favorites by. Here's where you can tell us, and, uh, this.
One word per thing?
Uh, it's, yeah, it's set up as a word cloud, so, um, so it's gonna. It's gonna make the, the font size correspond with how many responses. That are the same, so if ten people said. McAllister Park, then McAllister Park shouldn't be bigger than, than the other ones. Saying, so right now, they're, they're equal. Somebody else, if you're willing to try and put McAllister or Monumentum, then those two definitely gets bigger.
Um, what? This, we do not need to talk about now.
That's two words.
I would love to know about accessibility of language.
Yeah, I, I just read it like that, well.
Technology, right, like, not everyone, I mean, a phone, this, a phone is gonna limit people's willingness to do this, right? But also people who are actually gonna be like, I can't, I can't, I can't right deal with the technology, I just wonder. I mean, for a future conversation, as you get closer to the actual public engagement, you know, um, yeah, what you're doing around.
So, uh, uh, working around, we, we use in the past, or that situation we've had, okay. Number one, we try to bring some devices, right now, we don't necessarily have agency devices that, I don't know. But we've, we've had like promos that we brought in the past, poor people where we logged in and helped them to get in. We've also, uh, taken and just printed out, uh, the slide deck. And said, here, you can write on this if you want to, and give it to us and we'll include it.
Are they, have you done violin ball presentations and is this violin?
We have done violin surveys. Haven't done violin cetaceans.
So are, are cemeteries listed in the?
Cemeteries are reviewed, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's an acknowledgement of cemeteries, there's, it's not a. Major park, but it should be examined.
I mean, cemetery in Housatonic is where people walk all the time.
Yeah, totally, really, it's the.
Yeah, they're. Okay, uh, slightly different slide type. Five outdoor recreation activities to your family knows to enjoy. Yeah, this is just kind of examples of, of how this interactive, this interactive slides.
Oh, like, we have to read those things?
People really enjoyed the live aspect of pressing the button, seeing the thing change as they're.
Oh, my gosh, man, downhill, no alpines. No. No, burr nuts would be very habitable.
I don't have that many. Indoor maybe, but not.
Oh, I guess it's your activity.
Totally. Dodging traffic on division screen. At turkeys.
Oh, turkeys, yeah.
There's, there are pigs downstream.
There is?
Oh, I. Both Jovin and I are into turkey rescue.
We should list that as an option on.
On the wildlife. I don't, we don't watch it, recipe.
So basically, the procedure here is you're, you present something, we go with your vote and then the results are up here, not here. And so we're waiting here for you to go to the next one.
And it, it's reports. All of these slides, the, the slides are a record of the event, and all of the feedback that you get. You can then put on the town's website, uh, all of these PDFs as, look, here's the results from the public forum. Here's we.
Oh, but people can gain this like crazy.
Well, then that's, I mean, and people can gain the surveys, right? I mean, we have to have the survey so that it's open to multiple IP addresses because we want. Maybe people share a computer and they want to submit, you know, multiple group or family. But that also means that somebody could submit twenty-five responses. And we don't usually look at the IP addresses to say. Is somebody trying to gain the, the, the results of the survey by, you know, do we have, are we? And even if we did, we might say, well, maybe it's valid, maybe it was a school computer or maybe, you know. So, there are, there are ways that, and that's, I guess that's why we always say. Survey data is important, stakeholder interviews are important, but everything, you have to look at it as part of the whole.
It's all local, it's all people.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, and sometimes it's in conflict, right? I mean, there are gonna be people that give survey responses that are directly opposed to what other people are saying in their survey response and. It's kind of weighing, okay. What, what's the priority? And, and presenting. What people say. I mean, we don't wanna. We don't wanna. What's the word that I'm looking for? We don't wanna dictate what what the responses are, we don't wanna. Yeah, yeah, we we wanna present it. Here's what we heard. But also. You were, you're assigned the responsibility of planning board, right? So you're. Dedicated with that decision-making authority that you take and listen and then make decisions.
So, uh, I'm trying to figure out what the. Context of this is versus the survey forms that we would. The Survey Monkey process.
A lot of times, this is gonna be reinforcing what we hear.
Are we gonna have the same thing on here as what we have on the Survey Monkey, or would this be?
Maybe not identical, but maybe. I mean, again, it depends on what the priority is at that point in the process, right? If, if there are. There are things that you wanna dig in further that you heard in the survey. That that then we wanna design slides around for the public forum, we can go that route, or you can say. Well, here's what we heard during the survey, do. Are we hearing the same thing as public event? Or is it the two things correspond with each other, and and again, looking back at what we heard in twenty eighteen and twenty thirteen?
This can help also, um, add a public meeting if. If the survey response says, you know. We want to improve these five parks, okay, well, maybe following public meeting the next month. We're asking people to put work to us. You had a limited amount of money, which part do you prefer? And so this. Shows up, you know, again, it's just another way to drill into. But this would be used more for follow-up than the initial survey.
Um, well, you could use, you could use a form of this at that kickoff meeting where you launch the survey and say. Here's what the survey is gonna ask, we're asking you right now. Participate in the survey, but we're getting a snapshot of tonight's event. And so, I mean, there's, there's all the.
And that comes to you, David, from when it was done.
You mean, the Mentimeter?
Yeah, yeah.
Results, yeah, so this, I mean, we have an account that we. Have actively. All different.
It's captured, we can add a session, the results are, you know. So each meeting would have its own ID as, uh, as opposed to trying to accumulate all those things, you know. So we've already skewed the results.
Well, I mean, this is just kind of a practice round, right? This is kinda getting familiar. These are not gonna be our final.
This is the final.
Because in your survey that you shared with us, um, there's some open fields where you can actually write something in them. Are you gonna have, does this have open fields?
Yeah, so. Two different programs, right? This Mentimeter is. Like an interactive powerpoint. But the survey that I gave you the paper copy, Survey Monkey. Which is the, the web hosting platform that that hosts those. Even though there's kind of four areas. Alright, so again, another open, uh, Word Cloud one. We'll do this one quick. Sometimes I have like a little countdown or make some music to kind of. Got the tension, because otherwise it's, it gets a little. A little quiet.
Everything is two words for me, I had to. Oh, got it. Oh, you can submit multiple responses for this, so you can submit it and then go back and do it again.
And. Each of the slides have different configurations, you could configure it so that there's only one. Alright, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep moving because we still have to look double serve, so. It's just. The last slide's got my contact, but then, uh. Oh, I guess it's not set up. Sometimes it's set up so that the last slide is question and answer, but I think right now I've got it set up. So we get to manually click them, so are aware of it already? Yes, and was it where?
No, you don't have to, I just put them for the sake of practicing the question, oh, there's no way that I like, this is a real question. Um, community-based, I mean, so you, you, Chris, were, and, you know, talking about the giving out of the community and, um. And you went to, you went to Monument to the High School. So I was thinking about, um, that there's a possibility of, of partnering with organizations, particularly youth organizations. That could have this as a project. Like that they are initiated in the engagement, um. Like real simple project, or maybe something with the high school, what we actually talked about with before. Then he administered that at the high school, but also whatever, again, should is. Um, but also, one of the constituents that I think is essential to have in this conversation, you know, speaking of expertise. Is green agers, um, you have worked with green agers, you know, so. They, I know that they have, you know, did with youth, like the culvert, um, assessment a few years ago that MVP. And it could be actually kind of amazing, a lot of those youth are experts in open spaces. And spend enormous amount of dedicated time in open spaces and a variety of places, and it could be really amazing. That potentially they could be partners in the, in the project of engagement, not just what you all think.
Yeah, I think, I think it's involving. As many different local and regional partners. Especially. Youth advocacy groups. Lands Trust. Um, you know, um, and the state, DCR. Because Berrytown is an important. Part of Great Barrington too, right? Um, so I think kind of getting as many of those was, is important.
Well, I think I meant, just to be clear, I think what I'm actually asking is in, is in, can green agers get involved? So I think that that's a, a yes and a must. But have you and your experience, and I guess sort of what you all think. About initiating a project where they would actually partner in the project? That we wouldn't just be going and saying, what do you think about space X, Y, and Z, or how do you use those spaces? So active partnering as opposed to asking.
I, I think we have a commit, and I think we have, uh, as, as aggressive timeline, I think we need to include. Green agers as well as other organizations as much as we can on open meetings. I'm afraid that expanding the committee too much might actually slow us down.
Yeah, I think I'm saying something different, which is them actually taking on some of the work that would, that would.
Farming it out?
Or farming it out to youth, sure, we could talk, yeah, actually taking some of the work of you. Off your plate, that they would actually have a dedicated job. Um, I would invite you all to consider it, um, because it could be, it could generate conversation.
I'm still trying to figure out what our jobs are.
Engaging with the community to learn from.
I, I don't know what are. So, for example, let's say we identify golf club members as. And Malcolm is gonna take that one with it, go to the golf club and get surveys from. If youth are a population we really wanna hear from. How many of us are? They can take the surveys and go to the youth.
But not you all going, having the youth themselves.
I mean, that's, I mean, I think that's great if you're, I mean. Yeah, I mean, it sounds great, because, you know, us going around, I mean, that's so little, but. All these different organizations going around. And to, and then they're also have their, you know, their audiences.
So. And they're also fully. Engaged in the plan themselves. So should we then invite groups then to come to our next meeting in? August to, uh, participate in.
I think it'd be best to get a longer long process. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
I, I think it, it. Makes sense for the committee to, to look at the. The previous plan and those actions, objectives. Get the survey to the point where it's ready to be released, and then I think. There's a, a, a period where there's a lull in the action where you're gathering the survey data, and that can be when you're going out. Stakeholders and getting. Other groups involved in the process, so, but if there's a natural fit with. Once the survey's built and it's ready and released. Then, and you can kind of line up a lot of those things so that you've got a team. Ready to go.
So, so what was the, the timeline on the survey was, um, uh, you're posing.
By, by, we should be having the survey open by October.
The survey would be, so between now and October, we wanna get the survey questions locked in, and we wanna get people. Locked in who would participate in. Getting people to do this.
Yes, I think, and, and I think that could involve. Contacting all of these different. Players and, and making sure that, that they're aware of, hey. Or if we're looking for, uh, foot soldiers that are gonna be able to go out and publicize this. Survey and, and gather. I think. Typically, now, I guess, the, it's, it's good to hear. Sometimes we create a separate youth survey. Generally, the surveys are focused on. People eighteen and older, because they're the. Voting constituency of the town. And so typically, we have a separate, if we're gonna ask youth, or we're gonna have. We might ask in a separate survey, and that way we. Segregate those answers, uh, I mean, but it's also, it's up to the discretion, I mean, when he says we wanna open this survey, to. Anybody that wants to fill it out regardless of age. There's nothing says you have to. Say that. Typically, we have, uh. The introductory paragraph to the survey says, survey's open, the. Residents of, and it's, it's typically focused on residents, although sometimes we include question for people that are. Maybe workers that come to the town and, and work. Um, or visitors to the town, but, but generally, the surveys are directed towards. Great Barrington residents.
So we don't. We can't use it, let's say we got our act together really fast, and we wanted to know what visitors in August, you know, our visitors over the summer want to do. I mean, it would be a great time to see where they're going and what they're doing. While they're here, or why they're here, or anything like that, but this is not going to be addressing that. Or what their favorite.
You know, I guess, I mean, they could, they could provide. If the survey remain open for, you know, October and November, so you, you kind of. Look at all of those results in those, that's where you'd be able to say, oh, people in. In August or September, we're saying. That they were really enjoying, but, but it's, you know, generally open the, the results up while you're still gathering.
I think Jackie is saying, um. Do, can we get this together soon enough to capture summer tourism? And some feedback from. And it sounds like, given the timeline that you presented, that that is unlikely to be possible.
Well, I mean, we've got the survey, we're gonna look at it right now, right? That's the next thing.
Yeah, I was asking, like, do you want them in it only to the voting population, because, I mean, at least in high school, those are like. Like bad eight. Soon to be voters.
And if we were in England, they would be voters.
I'm only giving you the perspective that other towns have taken, and that they've, they've chosen to focus now, again. We've had surveys that where we've gone to the high school and said, hey, this is pretty much a mirror image of the survey that we've given to. Town residents, we like your feedback, but we're, we're having this as a separate. High school age survey.
We're talking about two things here, one's the, the youth versus the adults, and the other is the visitors.
Visitors versus.
And I think on, on the visitor's side, you know, we view open spaces and recreation not just as a service to. Residents, but also like economic engine. For the town, and I think as an economic engine, we wanna make sure that our. Open space and recreation, uh, survey or, or, you know, feedback includes. What attracts people from the outside. Uh, not just what's useful for the residents.
And I, and I think that's. Part of the demographic questions that are in the end of the survey. Can you give me some, some feedback there?
I think, uh, our, our, unless I'm mistaken, and speaking on a turn, I think our brother would be to. Include everybody who comes to Great Barrington, whether you live here or come here, or, or just driving through, uh, you know. What would you look for in Great Barrington? Do you want to say?
Do you think that if, if. You all fast-tracked really thinking about the survey, that it could be done. Um, for sort of approval by the end of August, and at least there might be the possibility to capture some of the. Summer folks coming at the end of August, the beginning of September.
No, exactly. We, we only have one survey.
Right, it's like you don't wanna rush something, but you wanna capture that population.
And we don't wanna do a summer survey and then come up with the real survey, and I would confuse that whole.
Okay, so, um. Okay, so this is the draft survey that, uh, sent to Chris, and I think he sent around to all of you. Um, so we've got. An introductory paragraph, again, it's just very bare bones. It can include information such as. The survey is open to all visitors, to residents, visitors alike. You know, we, we'd like to hear from you to, to help economic development in town, however you wanna structure that introductory paragraph, but that gives us. Kind of a, a why and. What we're hoping to get from some.
Just so you know, in many of the places that have. Questions where it's asking you to rank. When different people open this, they'll see them in different quarters. So, McAllister is not always at the top. So when you open it, like Mansfield might be at the top, or Grove Street, or this town. This is a features. It's so, so it's intended not to buy something beyond.
Because often people are. Right, I mean, the first couple that they see, they.
When I, I think, when I filled this out. I went down to other, and I put Cottis Street Bridge, it doesn't exist yet as an open space. But I just thought I'd do it right in ballot. Because it says, other, please specify, it doesn't exist yet, that's an open space that I was voting for. So you can't get, can't fool around with this, what if people just added on the street?
Oh, I mean. Add that in the other. Yeah, so you could hear from. And, and you'll find that people do. People will specify their.
But you can only choose one, you can't choose three others.
Well, and that's true, and you can choose two, and if you choose other.
That's your third.
You can only, that's your third, so, and, and I mean, these are things to consider. Do we wanna limit this to three? There's no, there's, this is just arbitrary, I, I mean. You could say, choose your fa- favorite five. Six, I mean, it's whatever you wanna set.
Now, I was just saying, but, but there's only one other.
There is only one. I mean, I think.
You could write a paragraph.
You could write, you could write three things. This, comma, this, comma, that. So then you've got, um, and. Again, this, the survey should be set up so that you're getting both. Graphable data. It's much easier to present in, in your. Uh, final plan, but also a number of these open responses, so. Will these, tell us more about what you'd like to see to improve open spaces. Again, this, question three says five, but that's arbitrary, if you wanna. If you wanted different things, I think this is an example. Where I think the two thousand eighteen survey informed this, right, because. We had all of these things, and then I noticed that Dan's in yoga, but it's not. On the list that have been included in the two thousand eighteen survey, so we added that. Um, so we're we're trying to make it so that they hear one another with the data we're getting. Asked about frequency of use of those those outdoor activities, gives you some idea about how often people do those things, not just their favor. Specifically asked about rating their neighborhood parks event, so this is where you can ask, you could say something about. Uh, safety, if you wanted a a a question of, you know, do you feel safe? And. Town parks that that could be and change the the uh language in one of those. Uh. Left hand. Rose.
And you'll change city to town.
Uh, oh, city, I'm just.
Yeah.
City, that's up. Sorry.
And what and stuff, what is um the intention of our going this tonight? Are we offering comments? Are are we revising? Are we just looking at it? What's the intention?
Uh, I I mean, I think to discuss it and and get it one step closer to. Having it ready to go.
Because this is a model.
Right. This is this is draft. Example of the types of questions that get used in the past.
So. We have time, we have a couple of months to get this finalized, right?
We're gonna have to start playing with it.
We have to start, like, maybe for the next meeting, we should go back with.
Specific changes, yeah, or if you want specific question types or if you want, yeah.
We see something missing that we're not going after in this, I think it should be.
Yeah, let's let's tonight focus on uh structure, are are there any categories of questions that we should be asking and then.
This is very recreational oriented.
This starts off recreation, second half of its conservation focused, and third part is demographic.
That's up.
Wait for it.
Wait for it.
So the the first part is all active recreation, site parts and such.
So just to um go back to this last question. Um, actually five and six, how would you rate each of the following in your neighborhood? So I mean, I think some specific. Comments will be helpful, but in some ways this doesn't necessarily. Yeah. That's okay, so it's, I'm not gonna say. But six for question number six, there are a lot of parks and people's responses might be distinctly different for each one. So I'm wondering how that can be captured or if it's just a general sense that you're looking for. I wonder what you all think. Yeah, because this is should be very specific.
I think if you look at at six, you've got an open response or you can specify which part.
Uh huh, okay.
So, I mean, I think it gives you a a generalized sense of, hey, people in. Townwide are saying we need. Better lighting or or trash pickup. And then here are the specific places that they're. Right. Um, so I think here's here's a safety question, right? And and again. This language is just suggested, but if there's specific other things we want to ask about. But which do you see as as pressing barriers or concerns? So accessibility or. Difficult that and this and this is where we might do some examine examination side works, right, or or when people are saying. I can't get to a park because I can't walk, there's no safe path.
Yeah. Good question.
And then you gotta open.
Like the ball washers.
I rotate some poison ivy pictures. I don't, that would help me enter a lot of the open spaces.
So question being asked about demographic groups. Um, so again, if if people say that we need more playgrounds focused on. Young people or teens or. Recently, we found that people want to include vets because it's it's come up that. A lot of communities where there aren't dog parks, there's a lot of discussion around. Creating dog parks. What what the best answer is. Uh, and then there's also a response part there to that question where you can do some. Then we asked about. Some activities that that folks would like to see more of, and and again. Some of these questions are once we take it from other surveys where the. The user value said, hey. We'd like you to ask this question and and we thought it was a good question, so we included kind of as a model question, but that does mean. Every question is is relevant for me. Uh, so then there's kind of a support. Yes, no question about different categories. Completely open response for question eleven. And then we try and ask about the Berkshire outside website to see if people are familiar with it and other ways that they learn about. Outdoor offerings. And then. Question thirteen starts our conservation oriented questions. So again, this is asking people's opinions about. Their level of support for things like wildlife corridors, projecting scenic areas. Expanding parks or conservation areas, protecting farmland, proving access to a recent streets. We ask about their personal. Willingness to to practice conservation. Uh, and this can also provide guidance if the town wanted to do some kind of educational programming around, hey. We heard from a lot of people, they want to learn more about compost, we said. Outpost. Then you can create a program. More invasive species removal or. Another nice one uh is the easement uh or sale of land to support trail improvements, I think that can be helpful. For other folks to see how many people in the community are willing to do that. And it can change. Some of those hearts and minds around, you know. Well, right now there's resistance to a multi-use path. I I know that that. At my stockage, there's some pushback against, you know, expanding the uh multi-use path at that those time. So that can give you some some. Wherewithal to be able to say, hey. Ten percent of the people said that they be willing to go there, they're willing to. It can be a statistic used to generate interest. Events. To rate, uh, again, uh, kind of categories of conservation, so whether it's. Preserving open space, wildlife borders, farmland, drinking water, what's your priority? Another opens. Fill in the blank. Or two of one, one that asks about their most important outdoor. Natural resource to be conserved. Which we like to specify, doesn't have to be their favorite, but it's the most important and then. Something else that we missed, the. Last bit of of information you want to leave with.
But that but that question was what's not concerned, what what should be?
Uh, it.
Or is it just say, well, mountain, mountain's my favorite?
Uh, that's it. One is favorite and one is like, tell us anything that we missed or forgot. So what is the most important, not necessarily your favorite, and then? What's something we we didn't include in. So, uh, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to input, well, I'll tell you what, stop. Uh. Best one, I'm just gonna go on, it won't let me advance until I put some responses. I can't move to the next part of the survey, those are required. Not all the questions are required, and you'll see when the survey monkey results. Are produced, you get feedback on how many people answered each question, so you get like. Ninety percent of people answered this question. This question was only answered by fifty three percent. See. It's typical that as the survey goes on, the response rate falls on. People, people start off answering all the questions. By the end of it. And that's why we like to to limit the amount of questions, I think this survey is just about twenty questions and. That's twenty five or thirty is about as long as. Try. Make it.
Okay. I'm looking at this and I'm thinking there's some real critical things that are hidden in the survey, you know, it's just like. Drinking water, we have a big problem with drinking water. And also I'm thinking about property costs and I'm thinking farming. And people who can't afford this or can't do this, I'm just. Thinking about farmers and relationships. Space. And it's all. In the one little box and it's it's one of the eight boxes and. I just on that one with drinking water is being important, I I wanted everything, I thought everything was important, but I didn't have any chance to call out that that's. A real big issue. I mean, how do you get into specific?
So I mean, I think that's where your role comes in is the local experts and helping us to to craft a survey around, hey, there needs to be more prioritization of this. It's a it's a local topic or we need to make sure that we're focused on this.
So we we can.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a specific question about. Water protection districts. You can, you can structure the questions how or when to. Gather the information.
It's settled. And that's it.
So there's certainly monkey allow based on the response to one of these questions. Dump the answers into different. Categories like cumulative, because I see how you have this one at twenty one. Uh, year round, weekend, seasonal, I worked at Great Barrington for visitor. Now, and.
So, yeah, so, uh, if I'm understanding you correctly. There are ways, once you've collected all your survey responses, where you could sort your data.
By visitors.
Right, based on different question parameters, so you could say, we want to select everyone that said visitors. And you can pull all that information out.
And so you have that survey result for just the ones that selected.
And. But you have to be careful, I mean, it's it's good for the committee to look at that stuff and and make conclusions. It, you have to be careful of, oh, now we've got five different versions of the survey, and so we've got. Three hundred pages of graphs and tables because there's, you know, two locations that are sorted different ways.
Do you have different um. Questionnaire surveys that we could look at that would be. Different styles and forms, or is this just the standard and everybody builds off of?
I mean, I could give you some other units that in terms of the.
I was thinking of climate change, for example. I mean, it gets called out or there's some, I'm I'm getting more political or more. Specific, but there's, I'm worried about air quality, I'm worried about fires, I'm worried about things that are coming at us, if they're doing this for ten years. What are we going to be looking at? Should we have something that we're it's more future oriented that we're. Concerned with and that should be reflected in that questionnaire?
That's where the, that's where the. And just.
But I'm just wondering if you're seeing that in other towns doing.
Certainly, yeah, I mean, I think there's a recommendation. And the wildlife corridors are a very. Popple. Area because people are recognizing that in order to have. Resiliency in our forests, we're gonna have to be able to have. Large swastika forests where you can have. Very slow migration of tree species, right, as as trees become no longer able to live. In this environment, you have to have. The ability for those southern species to move north or those species to move. And so that's where those wildlife corridors, I mean, the recognition of micro seed, but. Over replacements, right, a recommendation and. Precipitation events are changing, that that our stormwater systems are not decide around. The capacities of water that are flowing through them and we need to be planning the boarding. So I mean, I think that that those. Undercurrents run in the open space and recreation plan, but you know, I mean, this is not a municipal vulnerability. That's focused on. Well, those topics. And there should be an acknowledgement of, hey, climate change is having an impact on open spaces. I think that there's a there's there are two to answer in terms of that.
Chris, I was thinking about. Um. Open space. And housing and some of our bylaws, I'm thinking the residential cluster development and thinking about what we say about. Open space. And how we want to cluster houses and have a certain amount of open space, and I'm wondering if there's some way that we can. Bring that discussion. From the bylaws into this. Just for awareness, is this. I don't know whether we can do that or not, but I'm. Think of open space, we always use open space. What we want to see. And preserve in housing, and so. Um, that's just an area that I'm not sure how to go about it. I just want to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I think you could design a question that asks. So so probing queries about that, I think that. Uh, Great Barrington is one of the few communities in Berkshire County that has a clustering subdivision ordinance and then that, you know. We, that's a recommendation that we've made in other plans in other communities that they adopt. That type of, uh, you know. Density bonus uh for protecting open space. Some innovative site planning and designs. And I think that would be a good, good place to add. Ask people and and I mean, I think it would be. You know, as a planner in the area, it would be great if there were projects that we could point to and say. You look at this great project in Great Barrington that's happened as a result of. Their openly district. That other communities aren't doing because there there is the flexibility itself.
You just have to get. Creative.
Yeah. So, uh, the the third part of the uh survey is is demographic focused. Um, and you know, again. Right now we have under eighteen, because. Right now we haven't specified, is this going to be surveyed for everyone?
So my recommendation here might be instead of prefer not to say, just put over eighteen. And you have to fill out. It's either under eighteen, you're over eighteen, or you can specify your age. But we don't want, we don't want blank ages if we're gonna try to slice it by. Youth versus adult.
I think what you'll find out is that like on this question, you'll get. Seventy percent of the. Uh, respondents in some of these. So there will be a significant portion. This still choose some sort of each question, so. So if you say, well, we want to eliminate some.
I'm I'm vibing in the weeds here, forget. Let's not say, we'll we'll wait to talk about, I'm sorry, shouldn't it?
I just want to say, um, I don't, I can't. Think of any reason why we would not. It it really feels like, um, I I can't think of any reason why this wouldn't be targeted at teens and youths. Literally. And I I don't know that it has to be like, it feels like. You know, reform of youth can't handle a long, I mean, it's not what you're saying, but I wouldn't want to signal you're seventeen and you can't handle a long survey, you know.
Or you're thirteen and we don't care what you say.
Yeah, I mean, I think that I just don't.
It's an educational opportunity to get them involved.
Wait, is that?
Think about.
Is this signaling?
No, we just had a conversation some minutes ago about um either not targeting.
If we don't allow.
Not targeting the survey at youth or making a separate survey that. For youth, I just, I I think that that gets into the weeds of making assumptions about what they're capable of, and I don't think that, um. I mean, as someone who works with teens, I cannot imagine that. I how that would land.
I mean, just just like anyone taking the survey, you can choose not to answer certain questions, right?
Right, exactly.
And so.
Like, choose the questions that feel relevant.
Yeah, exactly.
An answer.
I would like questions.
Yeah, well, what we don't want though is the the whole school district having an an exercise. Well, every kid in the.
But but then you'll get, but you'll be able to see it, right?
That's right.
You'll go under eighteen and you'll be like, wow, we got. You know, we got.
As long as they check, as long as they. That's why, that's why I'm thinking we gotta force them to check an age.
Well, again, this is one pool of many ways to gather.
Yeah, right.
There's. There's no verification, all right? I mean, every fourteen year old could say, that's all, check their box, eighteen, twenty four.
That's all, so.
It just, yeah, it's just so unlikely that would happen, like. Again, it's also this assumption that somehow like. It's more wily than a twenty four year old that could be like, I'm sixty, right, like. It's, yeah, anyway.
We're all fifty five and there's not enough hot scots. We're all fifty five and there's not enough hopscotch.
Two of them will have scotch.
So nineteen is kind of redundant.
On your sphere.
Uh, well, so so I should just give you a quick explanation. Nineteen is kind of a redundant question. We like to include, we've used it with other surveys because it gives you a a sense of what the total responses are represented by the survey response, right? Because they're responding for their household. And you may only get one person from the household responding, or you may get several people. But at least it tells you, here's kind of the breakdown of who we heard from. And this is the total number of people we think we heard from. Because if people are saying, there are five people in my household, but I'm the only one responding, well, that's only one survey. But we can kind of extrapolate out and say, oh, we had four hundred survey responses, but that equals some two thousand people in the town, based on what we heard.
Oh, you're assuming families agree.
Well, and and if they don't agree, they better do it, you know, the the disagreeable parties should submit their own response. We have a income question, but we also like to give them a prefer not to say. And that, and that's going to probably be, again, about thirty percent.
What's the, what's the intention of the, like, what what does that put together? Income and response, does it generate something that?
Well, I mean, I think it just gives you a a sense of who heard from. Right, so if you just say.
Haven't heard.
Who you have. If you, if you see that there's a lot of people that have said two hundred thousand dollars more than you could say, oh, we heard from them. The wealthiest part of our community.
Right.
Or if you hear from a lot of people that say a less than forty nine ninety nine, you say, hey, we heard from a big distribution of our income.
Right, right, got it.
It's more, it's more of, hey, after the survey, you can do some analysis, say, who didn't we hear from? Okay, now how can we do some some more outreach to those groups? So, yes. Wow, and again, all of these questions you can filter the survey by. So if you want to see what everybody that said two hundred thousand dollars more, you can filter the survey by those responses and see what those questions correspond to. Or same thing with visitors should bring very simple or workers. And then we also, so Chris supplied us with this neighborhood map. We have a question on here about, you know, where do you live in town? I think that can give us a sense of where do you know what the population densities of each of those areas are? You could say, you know, we heard predominantly from downtown or.
There's a question in here about the parks in your neighborhood. But this could also say, well, we heard from a lot of people whose tonic, but not many people on state road. You can draw this map however you want.
You know, one thing that would be good to add in the demographics is what languages do you speak? Or what languages are spoken in your home, neighborhoods?
Yeah, that might make it a scary survey.
Well, it would, it would help, it's not asking. I wouldn't want to assume, I wouldn't want to assume that people wouldn't answer that, I think it's a, yeah.
Or it could be a preferred not to answer.
Yeah, I mean, you don't, you don't have to, right, it doesn't have to be required, right? But if people feel like, you know, then it's just you're having a sensitive. And it's also, I know that Chris has said that the OSRP is a community mapping project, right? It's going to give, if if this survey gets in, connects to people that aren't normally involved in the town process, you know, there's some learning.
So we have a question about how people access information. Are you using the town's website? Are you using email? Blast from the town, are you finding out information on people or the edge? Or some other source? And then the last one, I think, is a really powerful way to keep people engaged. And it can also be a recruitment tool. I don't know, Great Barrington struggles maybe as much as other communities and finding community volunteers to participate in town hours and committees and things. But but certainly in other Berkshire County communities, it's hard to find people that participate in those things. And so this can be a way that you can get a a list of people that might be interested in it. Or we also use it when they leave contact information. We send updates, so like when a public forum is going to happen, I send out an email blast saying, with the flyer saying, hey, you left your information as part of the survey process. We wanted to make sure people were aware, there's public forum coming up at the library, I'm watching such a day.
You don't specify what form of contact information.
Uh, yeah, I mean, again, we.
Some people might put in their cell phone or their home phone or.
Yeah, and we do find we give our, we do specify their email address really is, is the way that we can reach out, that's the most.
Do you need a statement in there that says that, like, this response is not is not like attached to the responses that you made in the survey?
So it feels anonymous.
So it feels, so it feels like your responses are anonymous, not tied to your actual, right? Not tied to you.
So, yeah, oftentimes we have kind of a disclaimer in the intro that says something like, all responses are anonymous unless you choose to leave your contact information.
But I wonder, like, can you set, can you set it up so that if you enter your contact information, the responses are still anonymous, meaning they're not tied to your contact? So like.
I don't, I don't believe so, because it's it's connected with, I mean, it's it's automatically with your IP address that's.
Or could you, like, after you hit submit on the survey, could that then pop up?
I mean, there's an answer message and you can have a a response message saying, thank you for providing the response. So I mean, I mean, the the survey, the the responses are anonymous insofar as it is connected with whatever devices. The response.
So you're saying the safety is dependent on the safety of their computer? Of the, of the.
No, I'm saying that the 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 identifier for the response is connected with the submissions through the computer or the smartphone.
Right, yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so it's, it's, that's how the survey will.
Right. So you're thinking about, like, safety and?
Well, I mean, that's what, for people that, you know.
Would not respond if they felt like they're attracted to them.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, I think that's where the, it's always the the favor version come in, right? Because we can, those are not going to be connected with any of what we do. So we'll collect all those, the cert, let's say, the survey is open from October until the end of November. And the end of November, I'll go to the library and town hall and and all the places that we've left for surveys and like told us. And I'll make sure they enter all of those for the library one and the one of the notes, you know, to indicate that that was a paper survey from.
You know, Jeremy, I I I wouldn't worry too much about it if if somebody really is concerned about their name, they attach to their answers.
Yeah, but.
They're going to find some other way to get their name to us. Just, I want to do a time check for everybody that's been at it for two hours. There's a lot more to discuss and Jack had some ideas too about people who should be at the table, people who should be outreach you to. And maybe that's something that you all need to be thinking about and and bring back to our next meeting.
I think that's, let's look, think about it, because a lot of what I've written is now that we know that somebody's actually doing a lot of work in organizing it, it's helpful.
Take the surveys that you have that we talked about tonight and look up the questions.
Yeah, I think it'd be great to come back with questions that we want to have on.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's think next meet, meeting, we should try to finalize the questions at least to the. Before we get outside it.
Wordsmithing is hard as a group, but we can see the.
Yes. We don't have to wordsmith. I mean, if anybody, anybody online, anybody here, if they have thoughts about how to refine the survey or.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm happy to send you all some other examples. I would say that I don't know how helpful it's going to be from the standpoint of generally, those are going to be same types of questions, just focusing on a different community. Yeah, I tried to include a variety of question types that we've asked, so you have a good smattering of types.
Yeah. I think this also includes most of the things that we include, you you guys included in the twenty eighteen.
There's like one, I was trying to compare and contrast, there was one that wasn't there, but.
Yeah, but we can do that and also that introductory paragraph, I thought was was good. But, yeah, let's look at the survey, try to nail that down.
I think we really should focus on that right.
And then we can start looking at, we can also then start looking at what we need to do to get, you know.
And then start thinking about our outreach, how are we structuring our outreach? I wonder about Julie, I'm noticing Julie is not here and Tree Davy said that she was going to come monthly and she didn't come last month. I'm thinking about conversations that I have had with parks about feeling like things were happening and then they found out after the fact and it is not an awesome trust built. That is a, that is a detriment to trust in the town system. And I also, you know, there's the conservation questions and then there's parks questions. And to make a decision about a survey without those folks at the table might be unwise.
It's just the same.
Only re, meeting once a month, that means we're going to be moving later.
Creation between meetings.
Well, I'm just wondering, in getting things done.
Yeah, how to, how to include those folks within the timeline, but not have people like parks. That that's their purview and for you all to make a decision about parks questions without, you know, just wondering.
Break a meeting up in half, for example. We come in and dedicate a full hour to deal dealing with things on our.
To say, I say, I'm sorry, let me just finish. I I'm wondering if between now and the next meeting, someone can be very concrete, reach out to those folks to say, hey, this is happening, we don't want you to be behind, you know, to feel like you have been then.
Yeah, I've got a here that to reach out directly to Mark's on conservation.
Okay.
Just for that reason. They are aware of the details, yes, you have a hand raised from.
Tell them.
Julie, I've been June twenty sixth.
She was.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Hi, it's Julie. I've been here since six.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, great. Well, good, you have any comments on all those things we talked about?
Um, well, actually, I wanted to know what way we could support the the survey for sure. And also if Tree Committee could also support the survey in any way. I mean, Parks talks about all of these issues continuously. And like Jovanina said, uh, over the last few years, we've talked about different spaces that really need improvement. Um, we've talked about, well, Tree Davy and I kind of came up with a model of how to to construct or renovate parks that would be incredibly inclusive, you know, across the different across the demo, not just demographic, but age ranges, activity levels, just incorporated a lot of users. Dewey Park was one thing that was really high on our list. Uh, we already worked on Grove Street Park really successfully, I think, when we were able to get some good community community input. So I don't know, if there's a way that we could support the survey for you, I think we have a lot of information, a lot of very detailed questions that we would we feel would be very helpful to include on the survey, just because we are focusing on Great Barrington and we know so much about it, like details that, you know, don't really come across on a very generalized in general survey. So that's pretty much it. And I think, you know, lighting is another issue. There was a question there, I know it was just a general survey, but there was a question about lighting, better lighting. I think that should also include reduced lighting, you know, because most people like automatically assume that better lighting means more lighting. And we're seeing that Giggle Park has been, I don't know why, but like really illuminated at night. The argument is that it's for safety, but, oh, not safety, actually, to prevent vandalism. But in a way that I think the solution has become something worse than potential vandalism. I think it's kind of like vandalizing our own right to darkness, people's right to walk in parks at night, light pollution, just things that really speak to little nuanced space, you know, questions and spaces, I think we could provide a lot of input. So if you are working on a survey at the next meeting, I think we would love to be included. Tree Committee has done a lot of mapping of who's atonic and greater Great Barrington, places that really need shade. Parks has installed fencing at Stanley Park that really is, has become a very inviting point, just because it is a delineated space now. You know, with with benches and tables under shade trees. So there's a lot that we know and that we could really, I think, contribute. But.
Really? I I invite you to take a look at the draft questionnaire that we're discussing tonight and and the time to maybe. With with your input is important. The only thing I point out is that we're probably not going to be diving into individual improvements for each park. At least in questionnaires, so, but they will be high level in general.
Yeah, but questions that can apply to all of our parks, you know, too, you know, but questions that like are are just a bit more relevant, a little bit more nuanced, a little bit more focused.
Okay.
I think following up on that, I'm thinking of people that we might want to be talking to between now and the next meeting. If we're wondering about youth and how we engage them or how we should address them or work with these with our survey, I mean, do we get in touch with Great Street and Road? Road Street and then, and. Well, I was thinking Green Age, but then I was also thinking about multicultural branch and then also about Berkshire Rome. There's different constituencies that were not necessarily represented. I don't know how.
Are you saying that might have input or thoughts about a survey, the survey?
The notion of just letting people know that we're doing this and are they interested in engaging and if we have specific.
I can tell you all of the people that I have talked to about this already, maybe next time we meet. I've talked with Rowood Street and informed them about.
But how do we engage them on this?
Yeah, I, on the survey or on?
On the survey.
No, no, so so that's, I was kind of holding this back because of what I felt like we were saying is, because I actually have let multiple organizations know that this is happening. I talked with Margaret Molten on Friday, I talked with Sabrina Allard at Railroad Street, so.
So we can benefit from that, or what?
No, no, I'm, I know, but I'm, but so I am holding that because I think that what we talked about was survey first, community partners, second.
How we best work with youth and get them represented here and the kinds of questions.
Who we make.
Right.
Go under eighteen. Right, so you're you're asking about.
On survey.
Right.
Survey question.
I wasn't sure what you're talking about.
Many of the situation.
I'm worried about politics right now, I'm interested in getting their perspectives on the questions.
On the question. I mean, I'm happy to reach back out to Railroad Street with the draft and say from a youth perspective, I don't know, Jeremy, what do you think?
I mean, I think. I mean, I think it's good, I mean, how?
Be a lot of, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering, like, in general, like, how? Like, what is, in terms of getting responses, when do you get to the point where the survey is too big? That you start to lose participation?
I mean, I think we're there, I think if if twenty, twenty five questions is is. And it depends on the concentration of open response, right? The open response drives people away. If people can just check checkboxes, they're more engaged. But if they've got to fill in a a lengthy response, they're they're less. But if they've gotta fill in a, a, a lengthy response, they're, they're less likely, so. I think, again, it depends on how you set the survey up and, and how you structure the questions as well.
Are there must-have questions in your survey that we can be?
Uh, no, I, I, I don't think there's anything that's, that.
So the form of the, of, of the document, uh, in I can prescribe, but not the contents that you will.
I don't want you to be missing.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't think there, there's. The, the format of the document and the survey, I mean, there's some overlap, but it's, it's kind of. Now, the, the, the format is like soils and, and unique features, right?
Yeah.
But like in terms of the chapters, I mean, like their, their formulaic in terms of like water features and, and soil types. And, and geological features and, you know, demographics of the community and, uh, so, I, I mean, yes, there should be. The public participation pro- process is where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah, we're not talking so much about public participation, uh, 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 participation, as much as, uh. Uh, stakeholders within various committees in town boards and missions town, like, really are probably more. Impacted by open space and the operation we're. So, I mean, to get their input in the questions, we just, we, we wanna get their input. Since it doesn't necessarily mean we're expanding the questionnaire. Uh, and.
I think we'd be good to circulate it around the folks, and, and especially if there are active groups that have a, a stake.
Yep.
Um, and get their, and maybe they'll have very specific questions that it would be really great for them to answer, like, and include those in the survey.
These are, I mean, are you seeing this as a, uh. This document, the OSRP? Always getting backwards, always. Is this a portrait of today, or is this something that's looking forward?
It's a snapshot of today and looking forward based on that. Circumstance.
So that we can. It's a planning document too.
Yes.
This.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the window of the plan is ten years.
Yeah, I know, I'm thinking ten years, but that's, things change so fast, okay.
So, I mean, there should be short-term goals that are more immediate, there should be some middle-range goals that are, you know, for the next five or six years. And then maybe there should, should be long-range things that take ten years to accomplish. Or maybe the town's not gonna have the capacity for, for five years, and then you pick it up in five years and hopefully it gets done in ten years.
Just back to your que- the question of who reads a draft, I would be happy to send a draft to. Um, Rowood Street, to Sabrina and maybe someone else, and say, here's this draft. We can't expand it pretty much. Maybe, you know, like, so do you have thoughts about what really you feel like is really missing, right? Like, it could be even just the question could be like, you know, please understand this is long, right? Doesn't have to be, but just to get a little bit of feedback from either perspective.
Yeah, I think it's a question or two that you think should be in.
Right, and then it can be.
Really hot right now.
Right, you all can consider that, that sounds great.
So, or there might be like additions within the question.
Right.
So, have we gotten pretty much from this meeting with people?
I think so, I think that we've talked about the survey, it seems like you're all kind of primed to, to go and, and think about it. And, and make revisions and come back to the next meeting, having kind of talked it up in the community. And, and got some feedback from some other folks, so I feel like we've, we've got a lot to.
Um, the one thing on the agenda that, uh, we didn't discuss was the development used by language surveys.
Chris and I have talked about that a little bit, he said that, that the town has, uh, translation services.
We can, we can do the, um, uh, translation of, like, surveys. And, um, one thing that experienced recently with a child, her topic is like for real-time translation. Uh, during a meeting, so. But that's nothing we decided, no, I wanted to put it out there, something.
That does have application though, because it's, it is going to add a whole nother layer of complexity to do a, a language translation of the survey. So you gotta develop the survey, and now you gotta translate it. And you probably wanna release both surveys, same thing to say.
Sure.
It's one time. Do that chat. Okay, it's good.
Any, any question?
I'm asking again.
Um, yeah, uh, I'm a person here alone.
I just said. I just said, I'm good myself. Can I say I wanna be in, in the committee, I want all the force on us, I wanna be a real pretty. Requesting.
Okay, let's, we, we gotta figure out how to do that, good, yeah, uh, the, uh. Anybody who comes to the meetings should be involved in. Yeah, I was thinking, if you've done such like, send the draft survey. Um, that's, that's one, that's all it's been circulating so far, but I haven't gone here to set a page on the website. But all that we're doing, it's loaded, isn't it?
Chris, I was thinking you'd say same thing, because that's gonna be something we're gonna, wanting you to do out the process.
Yeah. How, how do we, how do we make sure that you or, or anybody else comes, anybody who's a community?
Yeah, like, well, Chris, like we just said, well, you know, what we're doing, I wanna be part of that, we're doing.
See, what's.
You know, one of the other side.
Here, this pop, and then you wanna be a voting member of that. For sure, and I do have every friend who. Looking at the Ryback website, when they were doing their, going more faster, I mean, it was dynamic. It's, everything's on it, they did have a dedicated section, and I think that's what we need to do. And so I have a real, a real affiliation to the right end, to the father of the childrens and daddy.
I can just show you quickly if you want, um, share my screen quickly. Uh, what Monterey, I mean Monterey is just local, and, uh, they did both their. Uh, master plan and OSRP, so I'll just show you their website. Um, of course, it's right out there, okay, so you see they, they added tabs. There's a master plan where they've got, you know, PDFs of maps. Oops, they've got the old master plan so that people could look at the old document. Right, again, it's a PDF that you know, I don't know why, hmm, I don't know, maybe they have some of the password protected, they shouldn't. Um, you can look at the results of the meeting, these are. These are our public meetings, right, using the Mentimeter, so this shows you what the results are. And how it's.
He is incorporated into master plan.
Uh, yeah, there are two separate documents, I mean, oftentimes a master plan will be developed in tandem with an OSRP. Like, it's, they're kind of, the OSRP is much more focused on the open space elements, whereas master plan will examine open space, but only in kind of a personal way. So, but you can also see, going back to their website, um, they've, they did one for the OSRP as well. Right, so you could go to Monterey's, and they have their, you know, their committee meeting agendas, they created a separate committee. Um, there was, you know, select board member, Parks Commission, Planning Board, uh. So, there you go, there's an example for you.
Okay. Um, anything else on this topic? Guys. Thank you.
Yeah.
That was great to know that you're working with us, it's marvelous.
Okay, uh, that's after this topic, the, the only other topic left on our agenda is, uh, citizen speech. I'm hearing none, uh, then we'll join the meeting at eight twenty-two. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.